Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
President.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina and Commissioner Itza Flores.
President.
All right, Luis, can you lead us in the pledge?
Move to excuse other members.
Do a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, they pass, they're excused.
Thank you, Luis.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
All right, item two A, proclamation proclaiming National Public Works Week.
Who's here for this? Rick?
Rick Pedraza.
If all the comments, that will be again.
Hello, Mayor and Commission. City Manager. For the record, my name is Ricardo Pedraza. I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Far.
Okay. You got your staff with you?
Yes. All supervisors and my assistant.
You want to introduce your staff so people know who they are?
So... From various departments, we've got from Fleet Services, we have Robert Vela. Environmental Services, we have Sinte Puente, my Assistant Director, Ray Cano. We have a Street Supervisor, Luis Marine. We have Traffic and Safety Supervisor, Joe Perez. A Street Supervisor, Gilbert Galván. We have Right-of-Way Supervisor, Mr. Julio Vitia. And we have Animal Control Supervisor, Mr. Frank Villarreal.
Welcome. So whereas public works services provide in our community are a vital and integral part of our citizens' everyday life and plays a critical role as first responders in emergency events, and strive to provide public service on its highest standards of maintenance and constructive change in the public's interests. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works and its divisions such as Fleet Services, Transportation, Stormwater Management, Drainage, Traffic Operations, Animal Care Services, and Recycling. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on public work staff and their services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of public service, as well as its planning, design, and operations, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works directors and their staff. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform on a day-to-day basis. And therefore, I, Ambrosio Naves, Mayor of the City of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and on behalf of the Mayor and the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through 26, 2019, as National Public Works Week. In witness whereof, I hereby undertake my hand and cause the seal of the City of Far to be affixed on this 23rd day of May of 2019.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. You want to come up and get you?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of myself and my staff, which I want to say it's an honor to work for the City of Far, for the citizens, and also want to thank the Commission and the administrative staff for providing all the support that we need as well. Thank you.
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Want to come up here, guys? Would you get in the middle, sir? Get your staffs. Yes, sir.
At 5:30 to 8:30, we're going to be hosting an event at our facilities there on 1015 East Ferguson Avenue. And all the public, everybody's invited. We're going to have different games, different stations for every department. We're going to have food, drinks, raspass ice cream. We already put it out on the streets, on the streets and the actual, on our message boards. But we just want to invite the public here and then also anybody else. And you can also spread the word. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Right.
Okay, next, we have some guests today, very, as always, very special guests, but these are particularly interesting to us. Tina and Dr. Alvarado, you want to bring your people up here? So the City of Far can see who they are?
Thank you so much. It's my pleasure to introduce to you the future nurses of this region and PSJ graduates already accepted into UTRGV, Texas A&amp;M, and STC. And I was really excited that they have an opportunity to meet you and you meet them. So you know the hard work that we've done in this project. And also to let you know that this could not be done without the partnership that we formed with the school districts and the city and the workforce. So without further ado, if I could get the All-Star Project Heal PSJ students up here.
Can you come up here, guys?
So really quickly, a little bit about Project Heal. Project Heal is a Department of Education-funded grant. One of the participating school districts and actually the pilot school district for what got this program started was PSJA. And because of all of the innovative work that the school district did, Region One was able to apply for this particular grant. We've expanded to two other districts, La Jolla and Med High. Currently, this cohort of students is going to be the first to go directly into BSN programs. I would like Dr. King to maybe say a couple of words about the program and the partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Alvarado, Mayor, City Commission. We're very excited and very proud, as Dr. Alvarado mentioned. This kind of came out of an initiative that PSJ, in partnership with Doctors Hospital Renaissance and South Texas College, initiated a few years ago to have a pilot cohort of students who were able to graduate from high school with their registered Nurses Associate Degree. And from that, in trying to figure out how to scale that and how to build on that, Region One wrote a grant to the federal government to build on that work and using that as the model in the grant to bring in two other school districts and so forth and other partners, the city workforce board and everything, to have students that could go directly from high school as direct admits and already pre-approved, pre-accepted into nursing programs. Nursing slots are very competitive. We have a huge shortage in our region. This is tremendous in terms of, we need these nurses for quality of life, for our area, for our community. We also need this because nursing jobs are very well-paid jobs. And this kind of helps to build the middle class, continue to build the middle class in the community. These students, I do want to mention, I want to thank Dr. Alvarado, Tina Atkins, for their leadership and organizing, arranging this and everything. But these students have spent the last two summers, I believe, am I correct, students? So they gave up two summers, as well as doing a lot of extra work on top of their regular schoolwork their senior year. So they spent two summers, they spent time in the hospital, they've spent time doing special rotations. I think they visited the A&amp;M campus and visited the different campuses involved. And they did rigorous work and they met the qualifications, they passed the tests they needed to pass, and they proved that they're ready. And based on an agreement we had, then based on that, these three institutions have accepted these students really right up front as automatic pre-approved admits into the nursing program. So we're looking forward to this. Continue studying hard, doing a good job, because I think you're going to be taking care of us. Some of us in the not-too-distant future, right? Some of us are getting up in years. But I want to thank the city for your part and for honoring it. Again, I want to thank Region One, who's leading this, and we have two other districts involved. But students, thank you very much.
Yes.
And I do believe we have a representative from UTRGV here. I'm not sure if we have any representatives from A&amp;M or STC that could make it today, but... STC, Viscomacho, come on up here. These two entities have really worked hard with us in making sure the students get everything that they need. And I know that our community is very grateful for all their work. I don't know, if you'd like to say a couple of words?
My name is Nancy Nado. I'm a Clinical Associate Professor at the UTRGV School of Nursing. So congratulation to this, you know, it takes a village to, you know, to help the new generation. So we are very pleased, the School of Nursing, the BSN program, to accept the new student upon condition. They know what they need to do during the summer. So it's something that we are working together and we hope to continue again.
My name is Claudia Camacho. I'm the Project Manager for the Heal Two Cohort at South Texas College. We are excited. We've had already a couple of students in our cohort. They're doing well, they're progressing to Level Three. So if you all get lost in the way or something, you can, I always tell the students, speak to the higher level that have already gone through that current level. They are tremendous help. But we're happy to always have new students in our, and also see the rigor of the programs that healthcare in general is just hard, because they're taking care of patients. So we're excited, so I hope you are too. Thank you.
So... So students, we wanted to thank you guys and have you come to our great city, because I know you're from City of Far, first and foremost, and you're PSJ. And for our partners, which is STC and UTRGV and A&amp;M, please don't be confused. These are PSJ people, they're not, they're going to do fine. They'll be ready, don't ever doubt that. Just get that out right now. You guys are leaders, you're setting the trend for everybody who's going to come after you. And we cannot be any prouder of you guys. And I want to thank the families, because there's a lot of sacrifice for the parents for allowing your students to go forward. But this is a great career. Some of you will continue and get a PhD, if that's what you want to do, and some will switch out. And it's not unusual for people to start up in one profession. Dr. Cavero and I, for instance, we started differently. And you might switch over. We've had some people switch over to medicine, for instance, meaning physician, to become MDs. And that's okay. But at least you guys are being introduced with this great partnership that we have to this profession as a whole. And when the Mayor's office and the Commission, I mean, they're welcome to say commentary, but we're very proud of you. We know you're PSJA, proud as well. And we're excited to see the great things you guys are going to accomplish with your lives. So congratulations.
Mayor, can I say?
Yes.
A couple of words, too. Again, I want to congratulate the students. And it's, you know, I've been in medicine for over 30 years. And 30 years ago, we couldn't find nurses. We had to recruit nurses from all over the world, from, you know, from Canada, from the Philippines, you know, from all over the place. Wonderful nurses, don't get me wrong, but, you know, it's amazing now that we have a system that's created by the school district, by universities, you know, by the city commissioners, and more importantly, by you guys. And it's really, really important to understand that what you guys are doing is something that's been in the works for many, many years. And it took people to get together, but more importantly, it took you and your families to commit yourselves. When other students were out partying or summer school, I mean, doing things during summer, you guys were working. And you set the example, you know, not only for yourselves, but your families should be very, very proud. And also, like Dr. Hernandez said, you know, this is, could be just the beginning for many, many wonderful things for you and your families, for your children, for your husbands or your wives as well. I know many friends of mine who were nurses who went on to become nurse practitioners, PAs, physicians, pharmacists. So again, I congratulate all of you. I congratulate, you know, the universities for taking the, you know, not the risk, but, you know, taking the initiative to do something like this. This is very big. And again, I'm very, very proud of, you know, again, all of you, your families and PSJA and Far as well. So, and Mr. William Alvarez is here. I think you can see what things can accomplish when people work together. So thank you for being here as well.
You guys honor, we're going to have you guys just stand there. We're going to go up there and take a photograph of you guys. Is that okay?
Right now, we're moving on to a public hearing, item three A. I believe we do have two folks that are registered, Hilda? And that is Saul Sanchez and Beatriz Gonzalez. I know they're here to speak. And Blanca Coronel and Carlos Morales.
Are they here?
Señores, buenas tardes.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Rebeca Canciola, señor. Estoy aquí con ustedes junto con otras personas que posiblemente vengan más tarde para protestar con un proyecto que quieren, bueno, hay la proposición de hacer, verdad, unos apartamentos. Somos una zona residencial. Son aproximadamente seis personas, verdad, seis lotes que nos veríamos profundamente perjudicados. Ya se hicieron unos apartamentos sin que, varias no se nos notificaran. Y tenemos muchos problemas muy serios. Entonces estamos oponiéndonos, verdad? Blanca Coronel, Ana Garza, y otras personas, verdad? Somos aproximadamente seis personas. Yo tengo tres lotes, verdad, y pues me vería muy perjudicada de por sí ya. Ya tengo bastantes problemas con los 15 más o menos apartamentos que hay ahí enfrente de mí. Muchas gracias, señores.
Hilda, no more folks? Moving on to City Managers' Reports, item four A. The Submission of Sales Tax Collection Report for May 2019. The sales tax activity for the City of Far as of the month of May 2019 has shown an overall positive trend in the amount of $2,99,316 from this point last year, or an increase of 17.6%. Moving on to item four B. Current tax collections as of April 2019 are $17,750,121, or 92.7% collected out of this year's levy. This is a .02 increase compared to last year. Moving on to four C. As part of the fiscal, or Submission of Quarterly Report for Period Ending March 2019. As part of the city's fiscal transparency, city's financial reports are prepared on a quarterly basis in order to maintain informed, to maintain and inform our citizens and city commission. That report is in your packet. If you have any questions, our finance director is here to answer any one of those. Item four D is the city events. The library is having on June 3rd to July 7th, 2019, the Children's Summer Reading Program at University of Stories. Register now, or you can stop by the library and sign up. The Far Event Center is having many events. On May 20th, the PSJ Move Event, from 8:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., BCFS Health and Human Service, a count in partnership with PSJA, in an effort to raise awareness about bullying, suicide prevention, and improve individual self-esteem. May 21st, PSJ Thomas Jefferson Early College High School graduation will be taking place from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. On the 22nd, the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Event. That took place, and the mission of Mothers Against Drunk Driving is to end drunk driving, help fight drugged driving, drunk driving, support the citizens of these violent crimes, and prevent underage drinking. On the 24th tomorrow, Kevin Fowler will be playing from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. midnight. On the 28th, the Parks and Rec baseball closing ceremonies will take place from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. May 30th, Head of the Class Event, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The Head of the Classes, a bimonthly award that recognizes seniors throughout the Rurugam Valley High School. Students are nominated by the respective school council and selected by an impartial committee. On May 30th, the Vanguard Academy Graduation will take place from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The Far Chamber of Commerce will be holding a Memorial Day Ceremony on Monday, May 27th, at 9:00 a.m. in Memorial Park, located at 501 West Egley Avenue. And then the police will be taking, will be having a community award for outstanding dedication to the Mothers Against Drunk Driving mission within the community. In fact, they already received that at the event, I believe, that took place earlier this week. And the PD Chaplain, Ms. Josefina Rios, will like to present a quick letter of appreciation to the Mayor and the Commission for all the help they provided on the Mother's Day event. And I don't know if she's here? Chief?
No, sir, she's not here today. But if possible, if I can just get a quick 10 seconds?
Sure.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you so much. I won't take much of your time. For the record, Jose Luengo, Chief of Police for the Far Police Department. And as the City Manager, Mr. Mead, mentioned earlier, we did have an event yesterday for Mothers Against Drug Driving. The city assisted. With that in mind, I just want to say thank you so much for all your support and your help to the event center. Gary and his staff, they were great. So what happened is we ended up, the PD ended up having four officers recognized for all their enforcement efforts, dealing with street enforcement, all the way to community engagement. But we know what the officers can do, and they're great at what they do and the community engagement. I think the highlight here was when the mat in itself was able to present a community partnership award to the city. And I would like to present that to you at this time. And I know Commissioner Carrillo was there at the event to accept the award. So if possible, I'll let him explain a little bit more. But with that in mind, if it's okay with you, I would like to approach and present the pledge to you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it was a wonderful event. They were, they introduced all the different type officers throughout our county. I was surprised there were a couple of cities that weren't there, but, you know, the ones that were there, I was real proud of all of them there, the troopers, state troopers that were all there, the different type awards. I was real proud of, we've got one of the outstanding, what was it, a diamond?
We got a Diamond Award, which is basically given to the officer in charge of doing the administration part of the enforcement. We also got a Hero Award, which is the officer that works at the street level doing the enforcement. And then we got the Community Engagement Award, which is given to the officer that is basically concentrates more on engagement with the community, the youth, to prevent drinking and driving. You might be aware of the Shattered Dreams Event that we have here, Field Central. Officer Joseph Garcia does such a great job, and that is what he got recognized for.
Yeah, so our Far PD really outshined the rest of the county, which, you know, makes us all feel proud, you know, real good. We've got a fantastic police department, always been very supportive. And, you know, once again, keep up the good work, chief.
Yes, sir, thank you. May I approach to the lecturer?
Just real quick, for our citizens, right? I mean, I know change is difficult for people, and we had to make a change. And it's turned out to be one of the best things we did for the police department. And it's moving in a very positive way. And it's just not, what I'm saying as your mayor is what people are saying throughout the Rurugam Valley. So we know you're doing a great job. And I know, along with your colleagues and the fire department, you guys never want to be in the limelight. You guys always work in the shadows for the betterment of our community. And, but we do recognize, there's a lot of people in the City of Far and all over the valley that recognize when law enforcement and fire department as well, when you guys go out above and beyond and not just do your job, you do it because you love it, you're passionate, you care about human beings. And we recognize that, I just want you to know that, and that we're proud of the fact that you guys recognize as well. So, thank you for your service, sir.
Thanks so much. And I will pass a message on to the motivated officers. And just a quick shout out to Lynn Perez, because it's a partnership here.
Great. Thank you, boss.
All right, item five, Conception.
Before we...
Yes, Commissioner Carrillo.
Just a quick word, please, on the memorial service on Monday.
Yes.
Everybody knows, very dear to my heart, I'm being an ex-veteran and all those. And we all know that freedom isn't free. A lot of people lost their lives in order for us to live the daily lives that we do every day and have all our freedoms. And I'm not going to be here on Monday, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm here. And for all those who gave their lives, for those who are serving, and for those who are served, I would like to just stand up and salute them. Thank you very much.
Is he the question mark?
Okay, this time it's 4:42, we're back.
All right, item seven B. Discussion and Possible Action on Conditions Set Forward by Planning and Zoning Commission Relating to Fencing Requirements for AP Substations? So move.
As discussed in executive session.
As discussed, what? Move?
As discussed in executive session.
Motion approved, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Any further discussion? No. All in favor? Opposed? It passes. Yes, so now... Actually, we have one more item.
Oh.
That we have to, it's off. Where's Danny? Mr. Julian Alvarez is here, right?
For the record, Danny Ramirez, Director of Communications. Mr. Alvarez is here, he's on his way down. Dr. King is also here. So I'm the Director of Communications. The reason we're here this afternoon is we're going to have a signing commitment. So the City of Far and PSJ have partnered for the last 10 years with the CTE Program, the Career Technologies Education Program, under telecommunicators. And so we brought students in and done some training with them, and they go through, they get their certification at the end of the school year. This year, we had a young lady who is one of the primary providers for her family. She currently goes to school all day, then goes to work in the evening, does her homework when she gets home, and continues the process all week. So with that, just like students that get commitment signings to schools, Ms. Rocha is not old enough to start the job yet, but as soon as she is, then we're going to sign a commitment letter to her, and she's signing one with us that will hold the position for her. As soon as she turns 18, she submits her application, and we continue the process of hiring her as a telecommunicator with the City of Far. So I'd like to bring Dr. King up, so you can say some words.
Yes, let's, we're going to align this a little bit more on the CTE, because as we know, that's one of our priorities as a city and a school district.
Thank you. And Mayor, City Commissioners. Just want to, first of all, thank the City of Far, as we mentioned, for a number of years now. The city has been a great partner with us for helping prepare our students for the future, for their future career. And doing this through internships is one of, one of a number of ways that the city helps us. And the experience that these students get really prepares them for both, in a number of ways, for being responsible, but also for getting a feel of what a career is like, you know, what it would be like to work in that type of field and whether it...
it fits them or it doesn't fit them. And this case, in this particular case, it's, you know, extra exciting because this just so happened, I guess, that the City of FAR had a need for a particular position, and one of the interns, I think, showed, you know, great interest and capacity. And so the partnership is beneficial to the city, the school district, and certainly to, to this student that gives a great potential career start for the student. So again, thanks to everybody involved, RCT staff and, and team, and everything else. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. King. And now, Mr. Commissioner, Julian Alvarez, if you would, welcome to the City of FAR, sir.
Juliana Alvarez, is this one? Thank you for not having a podium taller than me, Mayor. Usually when I go, the podium's taller, and they say, I heard the guy speak, but I didn't see him. What a great day for FAR, right? And not only for FAR, but this great state of Texas. And so we're just glad to be a part of it. You know, as we have experienced the lowest unemployment rate in Texas at 3.7. Now, it hasn't been 3.7 since 1976. You know, Mayor was in first grade then. Right, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just kidding, just kidding. But what I'm here to do is to just kind of share on the accomplishments of the FAR ISD with the help of you all. Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you.
And so I've had the opportunity to work with not only Dr. King, but Griselda Quintanilla, who's here, Millie Hernandez, and Belinda Vargas, who have been involved with Career and Technology since I started as the Commissioner representing labor. And so what my role is, is to follow, which Dr. King has, and that's our playbook, and that's the tri-agency report. And that is that we are to put twenty-four to thirty-five-year-olds into some type of credential that will allow them, as the mayor said, not just for a job, but for a future career. And that's what we do here in FAR. In FAR, we prepare people, like the young lady that we were going to have the opportunity to have a signing event, not just for a job, but for a career, a long-lasting career, where she could provide not only for her family, but herself. And at the end of the day, that's what we want. Now, I've been coming to FAR multiple times about other things that you have done. And what I love about what you do here in FAR is you've always been proactive and not reactive to the, to the situation. Being proactive has put you in the forefront of many, many initiatives that you all have done. And Commissioners, I know I spoke to Commissioner Chavez the other day at lunch, and Mayor Hernandez multiple times about something that we're doing for the folks that actually work for the City of FAR, and not only the citizens, but those that are employed by this municipality, a first of its kind for the state of Texas. So I'm just here, Mayor, to just honor not only the great things that you're doing, but to acknowledge that FAR and the things that you do here need to be replicated in other parts of the state. So thank you for what you do for this great state of ours, and thank you for making my job so easy, Mayor. You know, the fact that we have an unemployment rate, like I said, at 3.7, it's because of initiatives that Dr. King and the folks that work with him have been able to put in place. And that is to decrease the number of unemployed and make those folks that are transitioning out of high school employed. So again, thank you for allowing me to be here, Mayor. I didn't wear a yellow shirt. I wore my blue tie, though. I forgot.
That's all right, sir.
But it's always an honor to be here. And, and thank you again for, for everything you do for not only the citizens of, of FAR and the surrounding area, but for the whole region and the state. So like I said, what you're doing here needs to be replicated in other parts of the country, and especially in Texas.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner and Dr. King. Without their support, and without the support of the mayor and the city commission, we would not be able to do the program that we do. After the meeting's adjourned, we could have everybody join us in the back. We're gonna have a signing ceremony, and then we have some refreshments afterwards.
Yes, we're gonna go ahead and have the signing ceremony first, and then we'll come adjourned, because I want the public to be able to see and record it. It'll be their archive forever, because, you know, the city commission is very aggressive, and it is very proactive. And they allow the, the mayor to be able to do, and interact with a lot of people from the federal side, but the state side. But it's always at their pleasure, because they, they want to be sure that we do what's best for our citizens as a whole, and not only in City of FAR. And so everything that's happened, all these partnerships that we keep doing with Commissioner Alvarez and PSJ, STC, TCHV, A&amp;M, just, the list can go on, of everything we're doing with them is because of this commission. So, you know, hats off to you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing us to do this. And now let's go ahead and, we're gonna join the back, and let's get her signed up. This Commissioner.
If you could introduce her to the public.
Absolutely.
That would be nice.
Yes. Benny?
So this is Evelyn Rocha. She's a senior with PSJ North Early College, and she will be graduating here at the end of the week, right? And this Saturday. And so this is our candidate. Do you want to say a few words?
Please.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hi.
I'm really nervous. I'm really sorry.
It's okay. Don't be nervous. You're doing great already.
You're gonna be communicating with a lot of people.
I know.
Okay, go ahead, go get it. So like I mentioned before, Evelyn is, has shown a very strong interest. She was a very strong, good call-taker. And not only that, she wants to continue going to school, right? And so this, give her an opportunity to work, help support her family and go to school.
Great.
Okay, so I want to take this time on behalf of me and my family to say thank you. Thank you for all the city officials that are present here today. I also want to thank Dr. Daniel King, PSJ, the school district superintendent, and allowing these programs in our schools. Our CTE Director, Ms. Griselda Quintanilla, and CTE staff are always supporting all of our CTE teachers. Mr. David Gonzalez, the path, the Law Pathway Coordinator for supporting the law teachers. Ms. Diaz, PSJ North Princip, I'm sorry, the PSJ North Principal and Administrators for your continued support and permitting our teachers to take students on these internship experiences. To my teacher, Ms. Trevino, for always believing in me, and she was always there for me since the first day of school. To the City of FAR for partnering with PSJ's School District and giving back to the community by allowing students internship opportunities and real-world experiences. And last but not least, Mr. Kenneth Ennis and Mr. Daniel Ramirez, thank you for believing in me.
So if you would join us in the back, and we're gonna go ahead and join her over there for the signing ceremony?
And then we'll come back in.
Yes, sir.
the same time, we do have an employment offer for her. And the writer, the letter reads, please allow this letter to serve as a formal condition, offer of employment for a communications officer position with the City of FAR. After careful consideration and records review, you have determined to be our best qualified candidate for the City of FAR, and we would be honored to have you in our team. Should you accept the position, you will be placed in a six-month probation period, starting salary of $29,500. Your appointment as a communication officer is subject to the following conditions. You must have attained eighteen years of age, past a criminal background, past psychological, and successfully complete screenings and the physical. And so that's it. We will have you sign, right? We'll have you sign here. Your mom can initial next to it, and then I'll initial here, and our director will sign.
Exactly. congratulations. And Mom, congratulations to you as well. And thank you, Dr. King, and Juliana Alvarez, thank you for your leadership and the commission. Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, boss. Do you mind if I take a photo with you?
No, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. We adjourned. The time is 4:57. Thank you, everybody.